Good evening, welcome to the December 3rd, 2019 meeting of the Milis School Committee. I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Milis Public Schools website under the School Committee tab. Next, I'll start with a roll call vote to my left. Kara?
Here.
Robin?
Here.
Steve?
President.
Ms. Givens is not here tonight. We don't have any student reps or teacher rep. Jody, anybody sign in for open session?
I'm not.
Alright, then we'll move right to action items.
Mr. Chair.
I'll take them as the same motion to consider both the 11-19 and the 11-12. School Committee.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalana?
I make a motion to approve the November 12th and November 19th, 2019 school committee meeting.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And actually next, before we go to time and learning, I actually just want to stop a second and thank the, both the DPW and the facilities crew for their work for the last couple of days and especially today to clear out and open the building so that we could have this meeting tonight. So, thank everybody for doing that and for people coming help, even though there wasn't any school today to come out to help us get through the topics we have tonight. Next, we'll go to time and learning.
Mr. Russo.
And Ms. Malone? Mrs. Mcmills.
Good evening. Formerly meet you all.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you so much for having us.
Give us a minute here.
There you go. It was on for a second.
Two months since I've actually, almost exactly two months. And I've been able to do a little observation, do some work there. Great, obviously beautiful facility. Shelby very proud of that certainly happening. There's a lot of good work happening there that we'll talk about. The plan that I put together for you for this year really comes out of a lot of entry plan work that I've done interviewing staff, some parents, getting my head wrapped around what's happening there. And that has really informed the goals that we've set up for the school improvement plan that sort of in line also with the district improvement plan. Should happen to come up here. Says it's looking. Let's try it again. I'll be able to share that with you. A little bit something's frozen.
Never works when you want it to.
I know, right?
We have it in our packets. If you, if you have it on your computer, we can kind of follow along.
You do, I know you have it.
Let me see if I can help.
We'll try, we'll try.
Try another computer. Multiple options.
There you go.
Let's see. Maybe one of you.
We just gave, we gave you a bad laptop, I guess.
Well, that's mine because that one that I got wouldn't connect and stuff. And obviously with this one. So, here we are. Clyde Brown, the school improvement plan. The, last year, the overarching goal was clearly to build the new Clyde Brown. That's really what most of the efforts were put into. And so, that's where, you know, as I look through the plan, that was the major emphasis. Obviously, that was successful because we are up and running and running very smoothly. The punch list gets smaller and smaller every two weeks and it's running quite successfully. So, in recapping the last year, it really makes more sense, these are overarching goals from last year, but Elise is going to really summarize since I really don't have a lot of context to really do that, so.
Well, thank you so much for having me, Elise White Assistant Principal and School Counselor at Clyde Brown. So, last year, we had a lot of successes at Clyde Brown. We developed personalized learner profiles, which I know was a district initiative and we inserted that at Clyde Brown last fall. That was able to support students at a tier one plus level, so kind of expanding students' learning beyond and kind of enriching and engaging them. As you might remember, we came and presented at school committee some of our individual student work. We've had some great students come here and present to all of you last year. And that was kind of a result of our personalized learner profile, so having students develop a goal and work towards that individualized goal. We also utilized Maple came to visit and our students showcased their learner profiles in that capacity as well. All of our student learner profiles were primarily focused on math, but then some other students went beyond that as well. And some students also worked on some organizational and self-awareness, self-regulation goals as well. Another great achievement was our data teams. We're continuing to use a data time teams model which makes three times a school year, focusing on reading, math, and social, emotional, and behavioral ease that stem through our Ames Web and STAR screenings and our social, emotional, behavioral screening data. And then this allows us to support students at multiple levels. A tier one, which is whole class level, that tier one class, which is kind of really looking at enhanced students who are beyond the tier one level. And then also tier two, which is kind of small group, or tier three, which was a little bit more intensive. We hit a lot of advances in our social and emotional learning. At a whole school level, we focused on our PBIS program, which is our core values program, taking care of ourselves, others, and the environment. And so, we improved that and kind of expanded that in a couple of different ways. We continue to use our Bear Paws and Bears to recognize students who are achieving those three core values, and that's a teacher-to-student recognition. We also continued with our Leaves of Kindness program, which is a student-to-student recognition, which is also really helpful. And we introduced a move to learn stations throughout the building last year, which is focused on having students move to engage their self-awareness and their self-regulation capacities. So, that was at a whole school level. At the tier one classroom level, our teachers worked together to look at the social, emotional standards and also kind of look at the castle standards from the Department of Education and align our Open Circle curriculum with that and then also expand that with different learnings they're doing in the classroom for teachers. So, we were able to kind of create a curriculum map with that. And then we also were able to look at specific Open Circle power standards that were helpful and make sure that those were being completed within the classrooms and then also look to expand those to see what else was needed. We did find that there were certain areas that we wanted to enrich and continue to improve on. And so, we created some lessons through the social, emotional curriculum with our counseling department. So, we were able to put lessons in at grades one, two, and three, and we're going to continue to do that again this year. So, looking at grades one, we were using the Zones of Regulation, which allows all students to have a common vocabulary and teachers to have a common vocabulary for self-regulation. We also looked at some social skills and friendship lessons as well. Grade two focused on diversity and differences. In grades three, we started an anti-bullying curriculum or continued with our anti-bullying curriculum and enhanced that. And also looked to talk about online safety with students in grades three and four through Pat Ranchelli and the Technology Department, too. For tiers two and three, for social, emotional learning, we, as a social, emotional learning PLC, professional learning community, we created rubrics for social skills and self-regulation. And through that, we were able to then create progress monitoring tools, which were used at tier one, at tier two, and tier three for students who are identified who need support in small group or individualized support in the area of social, emotional learning. And our groups run about six to eight weeks a year, three times or multiple times throughout the year. For, obviously, we had a huge, significant, major, amazing building that was built. Our new Clyde Brown Elementary School is phenomenal. That was a large part of our school year. We started in about December and January, creating a real push to develop a building plan and organize a timeline for staff so that way they knew when they could get boxes, when things were going to happen, kind of helped to secure that process. We worked with the business management quite closely to work on that move as well. We organized a community recycle day to promote community involvement and also encourage recycling with the community. I know School Committee did a great job of helping to support us with that. And we also planned and organized end-of-the-school-year events to commemorate CFB. So, we had an open house for parents and families and community members to come back and see the building. We did the time capsule programming when we brought out the time capsule. So, we had that, both the, I can't think, excavating it from the building and then also showcasing it to the community via Facebook and on live TV. And then we also had the ribbon cutting ceremony and our Find Your Way days to open the new building as well.
So, there's a lot of work that was done by Mr. Phelps and Mrs. Malloy. It would be, it would be, I would have to say that part of the reason that's been so successful in this transition has been the work that Mrs. Malloy has done, sort of putting all procedures in place. Everything that you see that's sort of organized and how things work at the school have really been done in large part by Mrs. Malloy. The assistant principal role in this school is really critical. A school that's grown in size, when you have a school of 600 students, to be able, and that number of staff, to be able to evaluate and supervise, the work of the assistant principal is really invaluable. So, I share that with you as a way of sort of making sure that she gets the credit that she deserves. So, as we move into this year, 2019, the school improvement plan is, children are scaling the rock wall. It's really a fun thing that we see happening and lots of things going on in the school. So, we're going to start with our overarching goals. Now, we are in this new building and now it's how do you live in the new Clyde Brown school? So, that talks, speaks to some of the procedures that are in place, some adjustments, some refinements that as you sort of put things, you know, in ideas, but when they are actually in place, they need some tweaking. And that's part of what I bring to the year, sort of overlooking, looking at that as well as working closely with Mrs. Malloy and the staff. It really is a group effort, you know? It's really just nothing that I could do on my own. It's not only the staff at the school, but also folks in this building that really sort of helped me in the work. It's really been useful. So, as we look at the first goal, which is really on instruction, one of the things that came out of my entry plan was, as an instructional piece, to really sort of look at the reading program. Over the years, Reading Street is the program at the school and has had success. But over the course of the years that it's been in place, there have been some teachers who've wanted to try some other curriculum that are out there. And Mr. Phelps has allowed for that to happen with some pilot programs throughout the years and with the, you know, guidance of the superintendent. So, some of those things are in place. And so, although the overarching program is Reading Street, there's now a little bit of, I'd say, for me, from my point of view, some confusion on the part of students. They're getting some different messages, different language over the years from different teachers and different grade levels. And so, I think this is a good opportunity to really take some time and really look at what the program is, what is successful, what isn't successful, what we need to really focus on and moving forward. This will be something really useful to sort of get started before the next principal comes in on place. So, you know, guidance of superintendent, we hope to have, initiate a K5 literacy study folks that will come in and have an objective view to look and see what is actually working successfully, what needs to be adjusted or, you know, or changed in some way. So, that is a major initiative, I'd say, that we're putting into the plan for this year. I don't think it's something that gets solved in a year. I think really we're setting up the next principal to say, these are things you really need to focus on. In the meantime, you know, there's obviously good instruction happening. I'm seeing very strong instruction in the classrooms. You know, I've been at Interim in a number of places and I would say this school is very solid in terms of instruction. But what happens in an elementary school, which is not uncommon in most elementary schools, people tend to work in silos, in grade-level teams. And they're so consumed by that that they can't often see what came before or what's next, how does it build? So, some of the work that we're going to be doing this year also is, you know, on the professional day in January, is to do some vertical alignment, which all the grades are doing, but we're going to be looking specifically at reading and writing. And I think that'll be enlightening for teachers to really see what they focus on and what other grades focus on. Are we overlapping or are we missing something? So, that's really that thought. Some of this comes out of the report card, if you can sort of see what happens with this. If you look at sort of the results that have come up, this is, they're MCAS, these are the best results. See, the news overall is pretty positive, but we have some gaps here looking at third grade where the, our average score of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations are slightly under the state average. And it seems to me that a school system like Milis, we should be hovering well above the state average. So, that leaves some questions to me, like what's happening, what's missing, where are the gaps happening there? If you look at this year, for example, the third grade, you know, it's four percentage points below the state average. And that's something I think we want to take a look at. It's not an alarm. I don't think there are any alarms going off, but I think it certainly behooves us to really look at that a little more closely. And the same thing in math, third grade scores are a little under the state average. The good news, however, is that we look at fourth grade, there's obviously some catching up and exceeding that happens. So, the instruction obviously is pointing towards something really strong happening there. And that, this should not indicate that third grade is, instruction is poor because that's not the case at all. But I do think it's an opportunity for us as a school to look at what happens in first, second, and third grade. How does it build so that kids are prepared for the testing? You know, it's not uncommon for third grade scores to be a little bit lower anyway because it's the first time students are taking the test and it's, you know, all on computer, which is something different. Writing on a computer is not something kids normally do in third grade. So, I think in general statewide, you see that happening. So, that's where it gives us some guidance to sort of look to the reading piece. We're going to use the school data as Mrs. Malloy mentioned, that the STAR, the Ames Web, we look at MCAS, we look at student work, the social, emotional behavior screening, all of those things will enhance the data team as we look at sort of specifically looking at student data to really target those personalized instruction plans. So, we want to really make sure that we are targeting the needs that kids have and also helping to enrich them when we need to. And through the data teams, we'll be able to do that with, I think, a little bit more efficiency now that they've been doing it for a year, so they're a little more comfortable doing that. So, that actually happens next week, so that'll be interesting to see. As we continue to do the work, we're looking, using that information from the data to really focus our lessons on, you know, the report card, the standard-based report card, making sure that our lessons really match with the standards that are in the report card, which are based on the state standards. Using Power School, Power Teacher rather this time for teachers using the report card is something new, so they're really figuring out how that works and it's actually working pretty well. They seem to like that. We'll also use the informal data from some online stuff, some Freckle and some, the IXL piece, which is not formal, but some informal data that also helps to inform instruction for teachers. So, it's really about honing in on the instructional piece and let's look and see what we are doing and are we getting the bang for our buck? You know, how do we adjust our instruction to make that work? And then as ongoing, we have, you know, with the Spanish consulate as part of the International Spanish Academy program, we want to make sure we continue that relationship. Kudos go to Joan for doing a lot of work on putting together the written piece that needed to be done, which is something I didn't have a lot of background in. She took the bull by the horns. I'll say that's that team effort piece, gathered the information that we needed to present, but I think was a very solid report. So, thank you to her. Oh, and just a little shot of this picture here, which is really looking at engineering. This is kindergarten. Can't help but love those faces, but what the children are doing there, if you can see what's happening there, that it's an engineering project where they took billy goats to grotte. And working as a team, they had to create a bridge that the billy goats could cross, but the troll could stay underneath. So, it would hold all of that. And the different teams created different ways to make that happen using these materials. So, it was a nice way, so looking at engineering at a kindergarten level, you can see kind of how that kind of built up over the years. So, for the school management, really the biggest piece is the routines that we have. And the biggest routine that we started on the first day of, with the snow day, was the new pickup and drop-off, which went rather smoothly considering the fact that the end of the day, we shut down the extended day, so we had 85 extra students going home, so more people picking up in the line. I think the line did kind of reach 1:09 in the afternoon, but we did get them all out within 15 minutes, which was good. So, I think when people come back tomorrow and we try it again with fewer cars in the afternoon, I think they'll find that it goes very smoothly. And again, as in great support of Elise Malloy who put together that plan, teachers are all out there, we're moving kids along, moving cars, it's really quite remarkable to see. So, that works out really nicely. And then, of course, the radon testing, which is taking the long-term testing is happening now and we'll deal with any follow-up procedures, but luckily the first round looks positive and we'll continue to hope that that moves in our direction. Back to the picture, so again, in the photograph here, that is the first day. That's our first day in the morning with the snow and everything and the cars and the drop-off lined up to sort of get the kids in. It really, it worked really smoothly. So, I expect, you know, there were a lot of concerns with the students know, we're having them come in a different doorway, how is that going to work? You know, kids are the most resilient of anyone, right? The adults have more issues than the kids do. And they knew exactly where to go and what to do. It was really quite great, so we'll hopefully, we'll manage to go in the same direction. So, our third goal is about engagement and communication. This was sort of the biggest issue that came out of my entry plan and it always is. Communication is always an issue. I've done, as I said, a number of these and every time I go into a school, it's communication needs to be improved. I'm sure they said that when I left my principalship as well, but you know, as much as you think you're communicating, it's never quite enough. So, we're really focusing on that and making sure that it's positive communication that's moving forward. And so, we want to extend our, expand our communication with families with the weekly Bears Den, Bears Family Den. You see put out that allows us to communicate with families on things that are happening in the school, also highlighting some, you know, activities going on in the school. Hopefully, parents are finding that useful. You never know how many people are actually reading it, but you certainly hope that they are.
I'm reading it.
Thank you. I love that. That's just what we needed to hear. Appreciate that. And also, you know, we wanted to make sure that there's visibility. So, at, you know, activities where families are invited, you will see myself or Mrs. Malloy there. It's really, I think it's important that parents see us and be able to ask us questions that come up and really just put a positive face on the school. There's so much pride in the school, in the whole community, so it's really nice to be able to be the face of that. So, we are also reinvigorating the monthly all-school assemblies. And you see this photograph in there is the first one, which was Veterans Day. We had some veteran, local veterans come in. The children performed some songs and wrote some letters and really it was quite lovely and I think they were really impressed. They took our big thank you cards and went and hung them back up in the VFW, so, in Legion Hall. So, I think that they will, they enjoyed that. And we're going to come together every month to highlight different things that are happening in the school. Also, a little routine so that we come in, we say the pledge, we sing happy birthday in English and Spanish to all the friends who are having birthdays during that month. They stand up and get recognized. We do our Bears Den. We have a raffle that we do every month, so we do that there. Just a little bit of routine that allows us to build the community and to help us feel good about being there. Morale for staff as well as for students to feel some Clyde Brown pride. And that, you know, we work with the Clyde Brown PBIS team because they have been organizing these assemblies each month. So, again, part of that team effort is sort of all working together. And then, of course, the end result will hopefully be a successful principal search process. I know you're going to hear more about tonight and that, you know, we hope by the end of the year to be able to hand off to the next principal who will lead Clyde Brown into the future. The final goal is really about professional culture. Again, there, you know, some teachers really talked about morale issues and how to, you know, they felt, again, pride in the school. They had to figure out some of their way in this new school, looking for some direction and hopefully I'm able to help with that. And so, one of the ways, again, is have some open communication with the staff so they know and feel comfortable to come speak with me with any questions or any issues they have, or also to Mrs. Malloy, which they do quite easily. And then also expanding the social, emotional learning initiative, which Elise will talk about, talking about professional parent training.
Thank you. So, thanks, Mr. Russo. One of the results that came out of his entry plan, when he met with all different stakeholders in the community and in the school, our paraprofessional staff really were looking to have more training to them. So, one thing that we have started is to try to increase our professional, paraprofessional training supports. So, looking at different, we just did a training actually on self-regulation, de-escalation techniques, some anti-bullying information, so they do what was definition, abuse and neglect, sensitivity to trauma. So, those paraprofessional trains will continue and increase throughout the school year. We also are starting a parent training program through our, caregiver training program through our Open Circle. That was introduced to all of our open houses and our families and we had a large number of families interested. We just finished that training program. It ran for three consecutive Thursday nights and we had 27 families join. And we have a waiting list, so we're going to hopefully do it again in the spring. So, there's really, families are excited and interested in learning about what their children are learning about at school and then how to take that to home. So, it was really exciting and the response was really positive. Again, talking about the all-school assemblies, we've been doing those at Clyde Brown, but kind of building them and giving them some more structure and routine, which will be really helpful. And I know you're going to talk about that.
Yeah. So, also with the assembly, it's really, not only routines, but really enhancing the core values of the school. So, for example, next month, December is, giving is the theme. And so, students will be asked to figure out an Open Circle prompt about what giving means to them. We're going to take some of those and film them and show them at the assembly so that we have a way to sort of look at giving and then also invite local shelter to come, to be donating some goods to the shelter, then presenting them to the person so they actually make the connection that what they do actually makes a difference in the district and in the community, rather. And so, all of that kind of just building and giving a sense of pride in the community, I think is really valuable. So, hopefully they see that, too. And then, you know, the other piece is sort of just seeing me around the building. That seems to be something that people have mentioned. And as principal, I think it's important to be around in the building. So, not only for students who are amazing, kids are totally amazing, but also for teachers to do some observations of classrooms in a more informal way and then giving feedback, talking about instruction. Part of my thinking and the reason that the new evaluation system was put in place was that administrators and teachers could actually talk about instruction. So, it's visits for a shorter period of time, 15, 20 minutes, and then an opportunity to talk about what was, that was happening in the classroom, what came before, why did you make this choice, what are you going to do next? And less evaluative way, but really about learning. So, that's really, and with some suggestions, obviously, to be made, that's my job. As well as sort of the standard observations that happen throughout this school here. So, that is also, again, a sense of people feeling pride in the work that they do. And then, we want to enhance the school pride is to do some activities with staff together. For example, tomorrow, the half-day, so CFB cares group, who again, part of the village, are supporting a luncheon for staff. So, we So, before they actually get to their projects tomorrow, there will be an opportunity to do some socializing and connecting with each other, less opportunity. One thing that's really interesting about what's missing in the building as well, as beautiful as the design is, there's no central meeting place where everyone can actually meet and hang out together because it's kind of, it's more isolated now. Even for staff meetings, there's not a space that's large enough for all the staff to come together. So, we're trying to figure out how that works. We've been meeting in, we met in the steam room once. We'll meet in, we met in the common area one time. And so, we're still trying to figure, it's not quite large enough, you know, for the number of people that are there. But, we'll make it work, you know? That's what, you don't want to meet in the cafeteria. It's just a little too cavernous and does not quite meet the need. But, we are working our way through and we'll figure all that out.
We have a good plan for luncheon tomorrow. We're going to have that. The really amazing part about the art room and the music room, I don't know if you remember, those doors open. So, that's a lot larger capacity area space, so that way staff will be able to-
So, we're trying that tomorrow. See how that goes.
Pick things up in the hallway and then go into the-
So, those are really the goals that we have. So, thank you for listening. And hopefully, if you have some questions, I'm happy to answer whatever you have.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Welcome. This is the first time you've been at our meeting. And I will say I've heard very positive things. And one being visibility, so, in the building that you brought in, can help. So, thank you for that.
It's working good.
I guess the, what I'll be interested in, and I would ask for, you know, as we get to the years and as we start the search, the principal search, is kind of some formal suggestions, you know, of things that may be going well, not going well, maybe things we should be either looking to put more resources towards or just things we should be keeping an eye on or checking in on that we otherwise may not know to do.
Sure.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I guess my question is for Elise. What is one thing that you didn't expect was going to be an issue with the new building that was? And then, what is something that you thought was going to be an issue and it turned out to be? More out of curiosity, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious. You guys planned and planned and planned.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then, something you probably assumed or potentially was assuming was going to be a bigger issue and it wasn't. And then, what was the hidden kind of, if there was one?
Yeah, I think, I think just kind of, well, let's see. So, I'll do negatives and then positives.
It's not necessarily negative. It's something you didn't expect. Right.
So, one thing that I think we weren't expecting was, so, we had a lot of teachers who were, really wanted to make sure that they had things in their classroom. I think there was some nervousness and trepidation, you know? If I were moving into a brand-new room, am I going to have what I need? So, sometimes we overpacked and planned and brought things with us that we probably didn't need. So, I think on the good side of that is, you know, when we got into classrooms, there was a lot more stuff sometimes. So, it was kind of a matter of kind of figuring out, you know, what we needed, what we didn't need, and then kind of resourcing that to different locations. Our custodial crew is phenomenal, amazing, and so supportive. So, they were able to jump right in there and we, you know, we kind of had to make a list and kind of thought, okay, we have this in this room up here in D wing, but it really needs to go down to the early learning. Or there was some furniture in early learning that was too big, so it had to go up to, you know, the C two wing. So, I think that that was the unexpected, just kind of navigating that transition piece about the furniture, I think mostly. But again, our staff was great over the summer. You know, it was a lot of spreadsheets and a lot of written notes and then trying to pull it all together. And Joe came into the end of that because we were still getting through furniture when Joe came in in October. So, he kind of helped to jump in there with that as well. So, I think that was kind of the unexpected, just, but in a positive way. I mean, I think that, you know, it was just that staff were nervous, but then I think felt good about it. Personally, I was, I was wondering how all of the procedures were going to play out. So, there was a lot of time, it's something that I like to do. It's kind of like logic puzzles, right? So, it was kind of like, all right, if we have this and that, and how's this going to play out? And luckily, it's worked well so far. So, I think that was always just a big question mark. But, again, our staff have been great. Every teacher, every support staff, you know, has stepped up, has jumped in, has just been amazing. Our administrative team here, they're great as well. Custodial crew, I mean, I'm trying to think if I miss anybody. Our, you know, even our bus drivers have been phenomenal as well because everything has changed. And I think that that was the biggest, you know, that's tricky. You know, the first day of school, we had, I think, I think our dismissal took thirty-five minutes or forty minutes. And it was like, oh, no, is it going to work? It's not going to work. And then the next day, we had it down to twenty, and then we had it down to fifteen, and then we were down to like ten, eight. And then we changed it all. But, we got out in twenty-five minutes with increased volume of cars, eighty-five additional students, and a snowstorm. So, I think that that was pretty positive.
I mean, the key is that people have been so flexible in understanding that this, everything is new. And that is really kudos to the staff. They're very positive about that. I'd say the thing that probably surprised people is kind of what I referenced, that this sense of not being able to see each other, that they're kind of isolated the way the building is set up. Not that it wasn't before, but, but I've heard men, they've talked to me about that, that they don't get a chance to sort of see what's happening in other parts of the school. So-
Which is unfortunate, but it was a trade-off. You were not familiar with the other building. It was falling apart.
Yeah, and the other building had, you know, it had silos too. So, when you think about it, it had three different distinct hallways. So, I think that, you know, but that makes, it's a concerted effort that we need to do a good job of how to build that community and how to build those capacities so people can have those opportunities to connect. So, I think that that's something that, you know, Mr. Russell's really been focused on since he's got here. It's something that the school is anxious to do. And so, when you have staff who are excited to do that, then that's when things happen. The other, the other huge stakeholder I want to talk about is the community and our parent population has been extremely supportive. So, when you, you know, you change all new routines, procedures, everything shifts. You know, our parents have been great. They've been so supportive. We've heard really positive feedback. So, we hope that you guys have too.
You know, and a lot has to do, as I mentioned, Elise, but also Jane Leota, who's the school secretary, or whatever name we use now. She is amazingly organized and has taken on a lion's share of administrative stuff that is really been surprising to me and also I'm so thankful for. It's really, it's a nice team.
Can I ask one more question? So, Joe, this is only positive. So, you've been here for two months. What's your impression of the district? What?
Well, part of what intrigued me to come was the size because I have not been in a place that is just one elementary school, one middle school, one high school. So, I'm curious to see how initiatives can roll out. I assume it's easier for initiatives to roll out in a smaller place. And I'm seeing that with that autonomy, you know, there's a lot that can be done. And so, that intrigues me. I think you're way further ahead in a number of areas, certainly in the technology area, in this idea of personalized learning. The whole initiatives that have been raised here are certainly things that I see other districts talk about, but they're not quite as far as you are. You know, and then there are other districts, you know, there's less diversity here. So, that idea of sort of talking about that is a little bit different here than it is in some other places. In general, I think people are open and really want to try things. And I just think there, there's a lot of encouragement to try to be innovative. That, that's what was really intriguing for me to come back to work. And so far, so far, so good.
Good. Thank you.
No, I'm good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. And we're very glad that you're here.
Well, next move to superintendent reports. CPAC is not here.
CPAC may come to the next meeting or may reschedule for later in the year. We're waiting to hear back what their preference is. Joan Lynn, director of-
Hello, Joan.
Everything, professional development, curriculum instruction, and other, we have, say, the kitchen sink, many, many different things. And Joan has, over the years, been the lead on several of the searches that we've done. So, she's here to speak to the elementary principal search.
Just as a quick comment about the previous presentation, I don't think Joe would ever take credit for what he's done in the last two months of being there. But, it has become quite the dynamic team over there between Elise, Joe, and Jane, and that they really are, you know, addressing things. And it has been the smoothest transition from Jason leaving, Joe coming, and sort of going through our growing pains of being in a new location. So, kudos to Joe. He has just been an incredible principal for us. And if he wasn't insisting on actually retiring, I mean, he would be a great catch for all of us to continue to have. So, with that, I think you should have gotten three different documents that I have passed along. One sort of being the timeline of really weird, I looked at it, I was fancying kind of figuring out, where do we want to be at the end? You know, like where would we like to be ideally time-wise for us to be making the recommendation for a new hire? And then sort of worked our way backwards. Took into consideration, I hope, and actually that's going to be my question to you, is is there something that you're seeing that's not included in this process to make sure that we sort of have it upfront and we can schedule it and making sure that we've got everything in place? We intentionally looked at the date. You might be thinking, why would we want to post the position prior to leaving for a break? But, the reality is that if we were to be looking at principals in other districts that might apply, that break time would be time for them to be getting their stuff together. So, we're still looking at a deadline of the end of January for people to submit theirs. But, we wanted to give potential candidates the opportunity to gather their packets together, to get their references in order. And that might be for them, that break time, for them to have more time to looking at that. Part of the full, Joe and I were discussing, it's part of the full Professional Development Day in January. While we are going to be working on some vertical teaming and some work on reading and writing with the elementary, one of the other pieces is it affords us the opportunity to have our whole staff together in one place where it's not as catch as catch can by doing something after school in a voluntary meeting. But, this would allow for our professional staff, who are there on Professional Development Days, to have about an hour for brainstorming. What characteristics are they looking for in a new principal, for a new leadership, and for people to help guide that process? We will have an opportunity also within the process for other people who aren't participants during that day to have a voice in that process as well. And those would be our paraprofessionals, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, all of those people to have a voice. And hopefully, that you felt that when you read that, that it's sort of embedded in here for everybody from the school perspective. Also in there, inviting our employees, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administrators to be participants in that process. And often what happens is we get a large group and there's a balance between being inclusive, but then being so big that it gets in the way of you being efficient. So, in looking at that as to sort of figure out who has volunteered and then to figure out how to divide up the roles and responsibilities. When we've done these searches in the past, we've taken some of those members and had them be on the paper screening team. So, they're looking at the initial applications as they come through and verifying that people have the correct credentials, that they have some, you know, whatever we're looking for, the experience, the licensure and all of that. And then sort of that first blush as to what would tweak their interest to say, this would be somebody we should look at. But then also then having some of our staff to be on the actual interview team for that process. So, in addition to that, as you continue down there, probably in or around February, mid-February, looking at reaching out for other folks in the community to be on that, that team. Parents through homeschool, through our school councils, figuring out what to do. In the past, I remember going through Jason when we did his search eight years ago. Homeschool actually put something out through homeschool, asking for parent volunteers if people were interested in serving. And they kind of helped guide us through the process of selecting. Again, you don't want to have a cast of thousands, but you want it to be representative of the group that's there in front of you. And then to, for all of the other folks who, we certainly want to have, everybody to have a voice, but a parent survey, a community survey. What is, what is the Milis community looking for in a principal? And to do that through a computerized search, a survey, sorry. And to be able to, you know, ask some suggested questions are in there, sort of in the middle of March, kind of if you're following where I am. And then, for people to also have that. And then, we can then incorporate that, like Joe did tonight when he talked about, you know, what he's gotten in his entry plan, sort of incorporate those concerns, those thoughts, those processes, whatever, that families in the community is giving us into the questions and figuring out how to go about that, to be able to get that answers. Again, the beginning of March would be that first organizational meeting of the actual interview team and who's going to be on that. And whether or not a school committee person is going to be on that. It's implied in here, but not directly stated there. Sometimes we've had school committee persons on our interview team, sometimes we have not. But, certainly part of that in that role. And then, interviews, potentially mid-March-ish. And then from that, based on possibly two, possibly three final candidates to be able to arrange for site visits. And I say site visits, site visits definitely here. And we would have a whole day of process for people, different groups, that we would kind of, you know, weave them through a day of activities where they got to meet all different groups. But also the possibility of going to their site. There's something to be said for going to see people in their own area. But, there's also, I think, I would certainly want to look to see how it was being structured. I wouldn't want to be, if they can't pick out their own employees who are going to say nice things, I'd like it to be a little bit more fluid than that. So, haven't kind of figured out all of the details of that, you know, process, but would love to be able to just go to a site and sort of have free rein. You know, like you could stop and ask anybody without saying, here's the team I want you to meet with, you know, kind of deal. So-
Would we do that here?
Yes, we would do it here.
You would give someone free rein?
Oh, I'm not free-reined without somebody walking with them, but I'd have no problem with them walking around, talking to anybody. Sure. But I wouldn't let them walk freely.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm saying you would not, we would let someone do that. Have we done that in the past?
We've done it a little informally. We've kind of done it when we've had opportunities, when we've scheduled something for somebody and there's been moments in between, just kind of walking through the building and allowing, you know, people to be introduced to them in the hallways and to ask any questions that they've got. So, yeah, I'm not as-
We wouldn't hold that against someone if they couldn't do that because it may not be their decision. Could be the building-
Absolutely, absolutely. And sometimes that happens even with the structured site visits. Sometimes structured site visits aren't encouraged by their district for whatever reason. So, so sometimes we've had to, you know, kind of, you know, on the fly, change that plan too. And we've done phone interviews as opposed to being able to be there present in there. And then having the beginning of April, the opportunity for an open forum for parents to come. So, to have a night where they are just present in a room and anybody who comes into the room has the opportunity to ask questions. I think one of the pieces that has gone well in the past when we've done this is that as we talk about in the classroom, we have an exit ticket for kids. Like, tell us what you learned today in this class. One of the things we would ask anybody participating in that is to fill out an exit ticket as they're leaving with their thoughts and their impressions. And that way, we have some data to be able to then go back and say, you know, well, I thought they answered the question well, but, you know, here's all of this supporting data that there was still more questions to be asked or something like that. So, there would be an exit kind of summary of what you thought of the night. And all of that information then sort of gets- And all of that information then sort of gets funneled back through Nancy, the administrators, who are on the team, to be able to help sort of sort through all of that data that then comes to, who are we inviting back as finalists for the process? And you'll see that this backs us up to April vacation. And again, things happen. We wind up having to push back things if they don't work exactly. But we are really looking to have all of this process done by the end of April. And I say that given the fact that then we have the month of May, that the final person, the candidate, could actually potentially come to visit and spend the day, like Joe did when he was here. And to be able to, you know, make sure you could see and the building in its normal running. May is fairly a normal month, with the exception of MCAS. But June's not so much, because we have a lot of stuff going on in June. And we wouldn't want to back it up so far that this person would come in and see a field day going on, or to be able to have half the school out on field trips. So, the idea is to have everything done as close to the end of April as possible. So, my question to you is, what are we missing? What is not there that you think needs to be?
So, Mike...
I'm sorry.
I don't see anything missing from my perspective.
I don't see anything missing. My one question would be, and I'm trying to think of it here, right? How it would impact us if someone left to go somewhere else? If, is April getting a final decision at some point in April? Is that too late? And I'm not sure we could push it back too much. But they're at the end of April. Because if we say the week of April 13, the week after that is a holiday week. We're potentially at the end of April. So, we may not have, someone may not be making a decision until 5/1. And is that giving them enough time in their district? I mean, are we putting someone in a position? We're also putting ourselves in a position if we, obviously, we'll find a candidate. But do you understand my point?
Yeah, no, 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 I absolutely do. Most contracts, administrative contracts, go July 1 to June 30.
But there's usually a...
Six weeks.
More than that. People here in our contracts, I think it's February 1st.
February 1st if you want to renew.
To note...
That's for the district to tell them whether they're being renewed.
But there's also a back and forth. There's a reciprocal in ours as well. And I think we're, I think we're trying to get, be consistent in that. I mean, listen, that's up to the person. Most likely, their principal or someone knows that they're probably looking. This could be a potential first-time principal, or it could be a principal from a, you know. But they, that's on them. I'm just trying to think our... I'm not sure there's much we can do about that.
I think there might be a couple of weeks where we can compress things.
There are some things...
And I think it's a point well taken.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I think if you could get it, and it may be impossible, I'll just throw it out there. If you could get it done by March, the end of March, literally on the last day of March. I don't know if that really matters, but it's something to think about.
Is this typically the timeline of when, if you're looking for a principal? This is typically the timeline that people go out and do it? Okay, yeah.
The bigger crunch has, for me, has always been your pool of candidates.
Yes.
And so, January-ish is sort of the time when if people are thinking that's what they want to do, they're also thinking of ending their current situation, wherever they are.
And that's on them. That's not on us. That's on them.
Absolutely. So, that would be, you know, the collection of candidates, for me, is the bigger one.
Sure.
As people get, you know, sort of...
Starting to think about it, yep.
Read it out, you know, for either they're backing out or they haven't met our criteria. So, we're not going forward. We're getting a much smaller pool. So, even by this timeline here, we're talking about having our finalist pretty much by the end of March. Because we're talking about the interviews, we'll know which ones that we interview won't be moving forward. So, we're not that far off from what Steve is suggesting, that we're down to two candidates, possibly a third candidate. But the opportunity then to make arrangements for site visits, whether they're there, they're definitely going to be here, and to just make those arrangements happening. So, but I think as Nancy said, there's definitely some overlap here. We can have things happening simultaneously and pull that tighter.
What's the industry standard, sorry, Mark? What's the industry standard for posting? Is there like a specific job board that people, that districts usually go to, or how does that work?
Actually, in the last several years, it's been, school spring has been the primary one. But then there's all of, or our professional organizations that have them as well. MASCD does a big one. That's the Massachusetts Association for Curriculum. The superintendents, there's the school committee version. SMASC has a posting board. But we would put it on school spring first and then simultaneously with our organizations.
So, it would go on all of them at the same time?
At the same time. And that would also be internally. I don't, I've not heard of anybody within our district. But we certainly have certified principals within our district that may be...
Interested?
Interested in the position. So, it would be an internal posting as well as an external on the same day.
Okay.
So, kind of this winter timeframe is generally what we've heard is a timeframe. We've been caught in a situation where, here, where...
We got a late.
We had a really late, like, decision, June, July type timeframe, where just the process on the other end got... So, we were then in a spot where we actually decided to hold off and look at an interim-type situation. Because literally, I think it was like July or August when we got a final decision. And we were like, the pool at that point is just...
It's none.
Is none. So, we couldn't do what would have, if we had known in even May or June, could have at least bought us a window to do some type of a bigger process. We just couldn't do it.
So, I know things take time, but we have the deadline for applications is January 24. You're on this. Your first interview would be March 16. That's seven weeks. And I know there's work to be done, but that is, that's a huge amount of time. And I think it's just shaving off a couple of weeks. I think that would, I'll let you go back and look at it. But seven weeks between someone's application and then the first interview, that's a long, long time.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I may. I think one of the things, obviously, from what Joan has described is, our intention is to be very inclusive, which does take a little more time. But I do think there are a couple of weeks that we can compress the process without sacrificing that crucial input from all stakeholders.
Yeah, and I mean, for all intents and purposes, lose a week in February because of the February break. So, that seven weeks is kind of six working weeks.
Still six weeks.
Yeah.
It's still six weeks.
I mean, the only thing I would possibly suggest is, you know, there's nothing to say, we can't start some of the information gathering, stakeholder gathering now. You know, instead of waiting till, instead of waiting till...
February 10.
February 10. We could do that. But there was also, just even brainstorm, yeah. Yeah, 17th. I mean, brainstorming characteristics, maybe you still hold that meeting, but send stuff out ahead of time. And at that meeting, kind of presenting some type of summary of what the data was collected. And maybe brainstorm off of or get confirmation from the people there that this all kind of makes sense based on what you had. I don't know, just that kind of survey-type stuff. The community survey, that's the one I was looking for. The parent-community survey, that doesn't need to wait till March. That can be, you know, and then that's, then that stuff's back and then you've already got that. I don't know, just, you know, probably there's enough tweaking in there that to get it a week or two earlier would not be bad.
So, then I forwarded two other things. One is just the job description, just so that you had a copy of that.
Yep, yep.
And then also a pamphlet, a brochure, that sort of highlighted all of the things that we're most proud of in sort of some Millis community, the job qualifications, and the facts about Clyde Brown. I think one of the pieces is that there was a time when we were much more paper-driven, and this would have been probably printed and we would have been able to sort of pass it out. So, I think one of the things that we'll certainly be doing is including it with our postings and to be able to have it on our website, so that if people are looking at our website, they'll be able to see it there. And if they were to choose to put it and print it out, then they could actually fold it and make it into a nice little brochure. But the, but I think also, we included the new school, so that we had a drawing of that. And so, made it look like it was a true representation of where our new building is.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Facts about the Clyde Brown Elementary, I would highlight the fact that it's a brand-new building. New facility as of September 2019, or however you want to say it. I mean, that's the only reason why someone would be looking, but it is nice to come into a new building.
Certainly has.
It can be our first bullet.
There's space. There's space. Brand-new building. Joe worked out all the kinks. Still paying attention. Good there.
Yeah, this would, this actually would be a cool thing to just attach to whatever job posting we have out there.
Sure.
It wouldn't even, you know, just look at it in the posting. We would not even have to come to the district website.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. I don't have anything for the chairman's report, subcommittee reports, elementary school building committee. Denise is not here. I think we're good, other than the new drop-off pickup that started yesterday. And correspondence?
Correspondence in your packets. There's, you've probably all received it as well at home. But the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is inviting you to the annual meeting of the Council of School Attorneys at the UMass Club in Boston. And there's a program on emerging issues in educational law. So, other than that...
Just, we do have it. I'm going to defer it to the next, to our next meeting on repairs to the John Deere tractor and the steer skid, just because we just got it. And I know it's been discussed at elementary school building committee, but we hadn't. So, I'm going to take the approach of being slightly more conservative on open meeting laws, bringing it up. But we'll put that on for the meeting on 17th.
Mr. Chair, if we need an emergency meeting for that, then we should post, if it gets to a point...
Yep.
I mean, we could literally post tomorrow for Friday. Not that, I'm suggesting that.
Yep.
But if we need an emergency meeting, we should do an emergency meeting.
Is it, I'll ask Harry.
I think we can have this part of the conversation.
Yeah. I guess I'll ask Harry, do you think it is something that, whether it's not, whether it's the end of this week on a Friday, or a day early next week, that we can get three people, whatever?
I mean, I think the difference between Friday and early next week, I don't think that's particularly different. So, I'd like to not have it wait two weeks if we can.
Do it Monday.
Yeah, if we can get three people, let me check. I'm pretty much, I'm out next, I literally have stuff every night next week.
I would be available, I can make myself available any night, but I know I will be in town early on, or early earth on Monday.
Are you guys around next week?
Yeah, I can do Monday.
Okay. All right. So, Jody, can you post what time?
Seven. Can we just do seven?
Can we do it earlier?
Yeah, do you want to do it a bit earlier?
Oh, you can't get here.
No, 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 I have, I have an appointment in town at 4:15. I'd be available, let me give myself a little time, 5:30, the earliest. I just don't want to book something that my appointment carries over. I could do 5:30 on. And I'm all right with that, getting it, kind of just coming in and getting it done.
That's fine.
Does that work, Carrie?
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Does that work? Okay.
Yeah.
And then we can see if Denise is around.
Yeah.
But we have three right there.
There's three committed, then we can just, we can let her know.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I forgot to mention that also you have a hard copy of the Millis High School profile for 2019-20 that the guidance department puts together with Mr. Malaney. It's a very good synopsis of our high school with a lot of information, a lot of data. And it gets sent to all colleges that students are applying to. And there are many, many things to be proud of that are mentioned, especially on the front page, with a lot of good data in the, in the rest of the brochure. So, we thought that was, it represents a lot of good work. And I thank the guidance department for putting it together. And it's part of, part of the ongoing efforts that they do to let colleges know the high quality of education here at Millis High School.
This is also, and I missed it, we should distribute this to...
Yeah, we're, we'll send it out on listservs. We said either, we thought we'd let the snow listservs die down, maybe Thursday. But also, we have, I think, 150 copies that we will have available at any gatherings for parents to pick up. Maybe Terpsichore, the Nutcracker, would be a good place to have it available. That's our next big event.
All right. We have no other old and new business. Do we have anything for the executive session topics?
Yes, we do.
So, I will take the motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining with paraprofessionals in transportation not to return to open session.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we go into executive session to consider and discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining for paraprofessionals in transportation not to return to...
Second.
Then seconded, it's a roll call vote. Carrie?
Uh, yes.
Robin?
Yes.
I'm an I, Steve?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. So, our next meeting after this will be December 17th, right here at 7:30.
Our next meeting will be next Monday, right? Our next on-camera meeting.
On-camera meeting is the 17th. Yep. All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
That's a force of session, isn't it?
Yeah.